Well, good evening. My name is James Carmody. I'm the Director of Public Safety for the City of Wyoming, Michigan. I'm also the leader of the team that will be assessing the Norwalk, Connecticut Police Department over the next few days. I would also like to introduce to you the other member of my team, Lieutenant Susan Bass, retired from the Greenville, North Carolina Police Department. The Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Incorporated of Gainesville, Virginia, has authorized us to assess the Norwalk Police Department, which is a candidate for reaccreditation. The Norwalk, Connecticut Police Department has voluntarily contracted with the Commission to work toward reaccreditation and thereby continue to demonstrate its professional excellence. When the agency originally entered this process, it received the Commission's Standards Manual, which contains 484 standards encompassing all facets of law enforcement management, operations, and support functions. The Commission accredited this agency in 1995 after determining it had demonstrated its compliance with all applicable standards. The agency's proofs of compliance are on file at the Norwalk Police Headquarters Building, 1 Monroe Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. Since then, the agency has attempted to maintain those standards. Our responsibility as assessors for the Commission is to revisit this agency and verify that it has remained in compliance since it was last accredited. Thomas Kohawick, the Chief of Police of the Norwalk Police Department, has appointed Lieutenant Melissa Lepore as the Accreditation Manager to oversee the reaccreditation process for this agency in accordance with the Commission's public information policy. The agency's candidacy for reaccreditation has been publicized in this area, and the agency has arranged for this public hearing. The public hearing is intended to provide interested citizens or employees of the agency an opportunity to address this assessment team concerning the agency. Any comments that you make will be considered by us as we review the agency, and will also be reported back to the Commission if you wish back to the Commission. If you wish to supplement your verbal comments with a written statement or exhibits, you may present them to our team at the time you speak, or you may send them to the Commission where they'll be reviewed when the agency is presented for reaccreditation at a formal Commission conference. You may mail your written remarks to the Commission at the following address. The Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Incorporated, or CALEA, C-A-L-E-A Incorporated, 13575 Heathcote Boulevard, that's H-E-A-T-H-C-O-T-E Boulevard, Suite 320, Gainesville, Virginia, with a zip code of 20155. And again, that is CALEA Incorporated, 13575 Heathcote Boulevard, Suite 320, Gainesville, Virginia, 20155. At the beginning of the meeting, a sign-in sheet was made available in the entryway to this room. Those of you who indicated desire to speak will be given an opportunity to address us in just a few moments. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. If you wish to speak with any member of the Commission's staff, you may reach them at a toll-free number. The area code is 703-352-4225. Again, that is 703-352-4225. The Commission's staff representative for this agency is Mr. Paul McMillan. You may also email your comments to CALEA, C-A-L-E-A, at CALEA.org. Again, that is CALEA@CALEA.org, placing the agency name, Norwalk Police Department, in the subject line. Are there any questions for the members of the audience that we can answer before we begin? Okay? And we'll call our first person who's indicated a wish to speak, Mr. Jeff Wagaman.
Hello, I'm Jeff Wagaman. I just wanted to tell you that I had gone through Citizens Police Academy a couple of years ago and how wonderful the program was, so much so I decided to take it again. I learned a lot about -- I grew up in Greenwich and moved to Norwalk about four years ago. And you learn a lot, you know, you make a lot of assumptions about the police and maybe some misconceptions, and it was a real eye-opener, so it was wonderful.
Good, thank you. Mr. Roger Smith?
Hi, I'm Roger Smith, and I live in the Row Eaton section of Norwalk. I'll just read you some comments, maybe it'll make it go a little faster for you. Prior to signing up for the Citizens Police Academy, which I just completed, I had little or no idea about the Norwalk Police Department, thank goodness. Having recently completed this course, I feel I have a firsthand understanding of how the department works. I am very, very grateful for the effort that went into making this course available to the citizens of Norwalk. The opportunity to meet many of the officers, many of which I see here tonight, and to spend a night on patrol with Officer George Daly was a real eye-opener for me. I had never been in a police car before. This has given me the opportunity to share my many positive experiences with my friends and neighbors in Norwalk. My thanks to the Norwalk Department for this experience who made this all possible for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Reverend Dr. Richard Clark?
Let me begin by expressing my thanks and appreciation to you. I'm the pastor of the Beto African Methodist Episcopal Church, the oldest African-American church in the city. And we are very pleased with the police of Norwalk that take up their time to come to our church and provide some forum regarding public safety, and are willing to engage the parishioners and help them along the way. I am convinced that we have one of the best police groups ever in the world, and we look forward to having them in place and giving their accreditation so the work can continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, Jeffrey Towser, did I get that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jeff Towser. I'm a clinical social worker, and I've lived in Connecticut for the past 19 years. Like my colleague over here, I recently completed the Citizens Police Academy. When I first saw the syllabus, I thought, what are they going to do for 25 hours? It was two nights a week for five and a half weeks. I was totally impressed and amazed with the level of knowledge of the commanders of each of the departments. I did a ride-along with a young officer, Kevin Grisaci, who immediately put me at ease, and it was really great to ride in the front seat of the police car for change instead of coming back like this.
I was making all assumptions, sir.
But, no, I grew up in Manhattan, New York, and, you know, things are very different there. I'm very happy to be in Norwalk and happy to have a police department, you know, with whom whenever I've had an interaction, they've been professional and understanding, and it was terrific. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Steve Serasis?
Sorry, background. I've been involved with the Police Department quite a bit over the years, not the wrong way either, from having programs that dealt with children's programs many years ago, and two of the people sitting right behind the chief, and they both were involved in the community policing, and they would show up routinely to help me out or just to check up on the kids and make a positive role model experience for the kids, especially when I had kids playing in a park that they couldn't even play in that was right across the street from their home. And they would literally tell me, it's nice to be able to play in Ryan Park and have my grandmother and mother watch us play. So, I've, and having been on the council in two separate time periods, just finishing up a term back in 2007, and I also ran for mayor, I got to see a lot of changes in the Police Department, and I especially was very happy and proud to call the people behind me that I know my friends, but also see them grow into the positions they're in now, because they, along with their counterparts on the Police Department, have made a drastic change in our Police Department. I've lived here my whole life, and there's been good times, bad times, and I have to admit, I believe that the Norwalk Police Department is enjoying quite a renaissance the last seven years, and it's quite obvious to someone like me that's out there in the community all the time. I run a lot of concerts, and I have initiated five years ago to bring music to different parks in the city. Once again, I would send a schedule to the Police Department, as they weren't notified even by the city department I was working with that these were going on, and they would routinely stop by and be very non-threatening, very much, people enjoyed seeing them there. They'd sit in their car, listen to music, they'd get out, they'd always check on us, once again, not really having to, but going out of their way to be part of a community event that was trying to bring people together, and I truly respect that. I did just recently, less than a year ago, go to the Citizens Academy. I suggested at the time to the mayor and to the rest of the common council that it should be something that everybody that serves in an elected position in Norwalk go to, including the mayor if he wasn't the ex-chief of police. And maybe he should even though he was the ex-chief of police. But what it does is, it truly does bring an understanding of what the police force does, and how deep it goes into the community, and how deep they go into their training, and to do things better than they've done it the week before or even the day before. I've known so many of the Police Department, because I'm also their goalie on their hockey team, so I know them, many of them for decades and decades, and what's going on right now is simply amazing in this city with the Police Department. And I do implore more people to take the Citizens Academy. It really gives you an understanding. I thought I had an understanding of what goes on and what's changed over the last seven years. And I routinely talk to my friends on the Police Department about this, and I'm aware of a lot of the changes, but to be in a program like this that actually lays it out for, you know, I believe it's 10 weeks long, and I haven't done my drive with anyone yet, although I have driven in a police car before, again, not in the backseat, it's something that everybody should take, and I can't stress enough that people in city government, in our city government, need to take this. It should almost be a requirement if you get elected into office, because a good many of them, a high percentage, do not know exactly what is going on and what is entailed to be a police officer in Norwalk, and how very good a job they do on a regular basis, and it gets better every day. I mean, just with Coffee with a Cop, everything they set out to start and make themselves better, they accomplish. And I could go on and on, and I know I have already, but it's been a relationship I've had with the Police Department for, like I said, decades, most of my life, and it's always been a positive one, and it just keeps getting more positive as far as my experience and what I observe them doing in and out of the community. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard Bonifant? Did I get that right?
Good reading. Maybe, yeah. Get my hair right. Better review. Thanks. Hi, Richard Bonifant. Been a councilman on and off for 20 years, but I got another week of that since they voted us out. But, you know, that comes and goes. But I, it's an honor here to be, stand before you, to support the reaccreditation application that's before you for the Police Department, I guess that's how you'd say it. I just want to say, as a councilman, honestly, what do we do as councilpeople in city government? But we vote yes on tools, weapons, overtime for, you know, drug enforcement or DWI pullovers or those kind of things. So, do we really know a whole lot of their internal things? No, but I want to say that the police in Norwalk, they really make an effort to meet the community. I'll tell you, they have like picnics in the parks in areas that might want to bring the community that's having struggles. They put demonstrations on at all kinds of places, and they get the kids going on and, you know, touching the fingerprints and, you know, the firemen are good and the EMTs, but they have like really good demonstrations. I think they're making a real good effort to get the youth to not be afraid of police as they grow up, and to, you know, go forward with that kind of stuff. I got to tell you, they're really good, and I don't want to go too far here with Melissa Lepore and the camera, but let's just say when one of my kids was going, you know, maybe in the wrong direction, she straightened her out, and I don't even know what she did, but it worked. Okay? So, I appreciate it that way. All right?
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, and, you know, congrats to all the policemen here.
Thank you. Bill Zombach?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Bill Zombach. I've lived in East Norwalk, been here for about 20 years. Actually, I was a firefighter at the Perfield, retired about 14 years ago, and was associated with the Perfield Police Department, which is also a really good department. I've got to say, this department stands above and beyond. I just finished the Citizens Police Academy also, and most everything that was on my mind has been said, except I saw cohesiveness and working together between the top and the bottom in the Police Department here, which I think is second to none. And as far as elected officials taking the course, I think it should be mandatory in the middle schools, in the high schools, because it'll definitely change young people's outlook towards police. And I think if there was funding for it, I think it would be the most beneficial thing you could possibly do.
Thank you.
We've got three more.
Three more? Did I get that right?
Yes. Gabriela Pena-Pirelli. How are you? I got involved in the Citizen Academy because I was a president of Latinos Unidos de Connecticut in Norwalk, and I also worked for Miffler Child Guidance Center. And when I got involved in the academy, I was like, okay, let's see what. And everything changed. I mean, I come from a country that we don't believe in police, like Venezuela. It's like, forget it. But in here, it's totally different. I mean, we cry in the academy, we see so many positive things, and it's like, they are friends with everybody. It's amazing. Now, since I finished the course like a year and a half ago, I think, I recommend it to everybody. I'm like, you should go, everybody. I see a policeman in the street, and I say, you should guys go to the schools and do the Citizen Police Academy for the kids, because I think it's a great idea, and it's a hard work. It's not that easy, and they are not the bad guys. There really is a tough job for them.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Diane?
Lauricella.
Lauricella.
Not as pretty as the previous speaker, but melodic.
It rings.
Good evening. My name is Diane Lauricella. I'm a citizen in Norwalk, have lived in Norwalk a little over 30 years, and I thank you for having these sessions. I wish more of the public knew about them or would help you and guide our Police Department. The first thing I want to say is, the police in Norwalk do not have an easy job. It's a big city, especially with all of societal problems of guns, domestic violence, people not getting along, and they have a fabulous, they do a good job. It's not easy, and I really give a lot of respect to the chief, assistant chief, Zeca, and others that I've missed. I don't remember everyone's name in the hierarchy, and I really appreciate that they're here tonight to listen. The thing I wanted to talk about, though, was some things that I think we could use some improvement upon, and I'm happy to help as I have given and suggested this help. The first thing has to do with, unfortunately, right now, the Police Department is in charge of the noise ordinance as far as enforcement. Now, it is a health issue, and we've been going around and around, and I know the Police Department themselves have appeared before our council, city council ordinance committee, because it's not an enforced, it's not an easily enforceable ordinance. However, unless and until that is changed, and I know there is a movement to do so, I believe it's important for citizens that have issues related to noise to feel that they're being listened to. And unfortunately, I'm here representing the South Norwalk Citizens for Justice, and we've had some encounters where, in good faith, the citizens attempted to help the Police Department in calling up when noise issues arose in an industrial site abutting a neighborhood off of Chestnut and Librano. Now, the thing is, it's not an easy job to be a police person. I'm a former investigator with the Department of Environmental Protection, and at times I had to employ special instrumentation. I had to be trained how to use it, I had to make sure it was calibrated, I had to make sure it was the right equipment, and I was also a health and safety officer, so all my people had to have me help them. Because of that, I feel there's a need for us, instead of denying there's an issue, the time has come, especially after the election, of which I ran for city council and did not succeed, but it was a wonderful experience, anyway, that we need to sit down, take the citizens' interest and complaint more seriously and more happily. I myself was subjected to, I think, some rough discussion, and my comments were cut short. I was really surprised when I had a meeting with the mayor and the chief. I didn't feel like I was being taken seriously, and I didn't feel, as a citizen, loved enough by my Police Department. So, again, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion, because a lot of things like this, it turns off citizens, so you won't hear from citizens that are having potential concerns. And I think with just true discussion, instead of pretending we're going to have a discussion, a lot of issues can be resolved in Norwalk that do come up. I also have a white-collar crime issue that was not resolved in a manner, as a former investigator, I was quite surprised. I am going to write that to you because it is very detailed and complicated, and I do not want to bring it up. Again, it's just to help inform my Police Department how they can improve how they do things when citizens stick their neck out, because it's not easy to make a complaint to any city government agency. Takes time, takes some bravery sometimes, and of course, detail. I think, the only thing I would say is, I'd like my Police Department to be more responsive when citizens have a concern. I think they do a fabulous job with Coffee with a Cop. I know they do a lot of work with the kids, and that's fabulous. I would love to see them on bicycles again, but I know that they do have community policing starting up again. So many great things, but I think there is some need for improvement about citizens' complaints, the way they're handled, the way noise complaints are taken seriously or not. Oftentimes, the citizen and I checked, and I taught my people that in South Norwalk how to file a complaint about noise to help the police, and often, the police would show up without their instrumentation, and some of my colleagues felt they weren't being taken as seriously. So, nowhere to go but up. Again, I offered to the mayor and the Police Department, let's talk, let's talk soon, and let's, the ordinance change was taken off four months ago, was taken off for discussion. A lot of us were bummed out about that because we were very supportive of changes. We want to see the Police Department not be the only department in the city to enforce the noise ordinance. We're suggesting, and because the mayor is here, I want to, I've said this before, the Health Department and the Zoning Department should help our police in enforcing such an important ordinance. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Brown?
I really didn't prepare anything. I just, I really didn't know what to expect, but I was very, very impressed of the professionalism of the police force. I felt like I was back in school again, and everything was planned very well. My only experience with the Police Department was around 25 years ago. I was cutting trees down in my backyard. One of the trees landed on me. The Police Department came, they worked, I'm known as the guy under the tree. And they worked very well with the Fire Department, at least in this case, and it's just, I don't want to say it was a good experience, but it came out okay. And I'm real glad about the course which was given, and I learned a lot more than I thought I would.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thomas Tierney?
Hello, my name is Thomas Tierney. I was born and raised in Norwalk. Lived here most of my life, and moved away as an adult, came back recently. I came here to say one thing. My experience with the police has unfortunately been negative. I applied for a pistol permit recently. The law says they're supposed to make a decision within 60 days. They did not make a decision for 120 days, and I was denied for what I believe is an arbitrary reason. I'm a homeowner and resident in Silvermine, and there's a problem with property crime, homes being broken into in the middle of the day and robbed. From my perspective, the police have not made it a high priority, and when citizens like me try and defend themselves, they're denied the ability to do so. So, thank you for listening.
Jean Bobwich?
Hi, my name is Jean Bobwich. I've lived in Norwalk for, I think, 17 years. I was a member of also the Police Citizens Academy recently, a group of perhaps 40, nearly 40 students who sat through an unbelievable 25 hours of edification of what the Police Department does, from soup to nuts. The integrity of the people in the force was very obvious. The professionalism, as someone else, or a few other people have mentioned, was beyond my, what I ever thought was possible. The flip side of that was the human part of what went on, the camaraderie, the spirit, the really, really positive feeling that we got by being in the building. It was incredible. It was very, very positive. So, I think I agree with some of the other speakers in that I'd love to see that extended in some way, and a number of us in the class have talked about, among ourselves, about how we could help do that. I've also had a few other interactions with the Police Department. Initially, I moved to Norwalk as a single parent, and I worked in Manhattan, so my only interaction was on a Saturday morning, having the Police Department look at my daughter's car seat and making sure that it was properly fitted, and for that, I was very thankful. Beyond that, I've had a number of 911 calls. I'm an elderly mom, and the police were phenomenal, always first there. The first time I had to call 911, the officer was there when I, before I turned around, with the oxygen container, which revived my mother. So, it was amazing. And all the other times was very positive. I also just stepped off the Board of, the Board of Directors of a daycare in town, and we had a group, we had a trip planned for the kids, and I called Lieutenant Blake to see if we could have some officers help the kids cross the street, and he called me back literally at 7:00 AM the next morning and said he would do whatever he could. So, I was surprised, I was surprised that he was so on target and so on the ball. So, and the one other thing, actually, my niece, right now, is at, is part of the cadet corps. That's managed, I believe, by Officer Holmes and Taborda, and she went from a 14-year-old runaway to a kid who is, who will soon be on the force. So, and I believe that it was Sergeant Galino who reacted, who came initially to the house to see what was going on. And so, I have really nothing but positive interactions that go beyond just sit in a classroom. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Well, I thank you for coming out. It's important, important for us to get the community feedback, certainly important for the agency as well. Having experienced and listening to the value of Citizens Academies, I think probably one of the best things that law enforcement collectively has done. We've opened up the curtain, and, you know, I think one of the real kind of aha moments is the fact that it's nothing close to what was depicted on television, which is a good thing. You know, we, they get things done in 45 minutes with commercials, takes us a little bit longer sometimes, but I think it's good for us to share, and I compliment the chief and his staff for doing that, sharing not only how we do business in this profession, but the fact that the people that are doing it are people just like you. They go home to their families at nighttime, they have those things about themselves that individualize them. This is what we do. individualize them, this is what we do, this is not who we are. So I compliment the chief and his staff for sharing that with you. I think it's critically important, and I agree with those who've come forward and said that more and more people should participate in that. I think once we, I've had people in academies sit there, and, you know, they walk in like this, and, okay, what are you going to explain to me, or what are you going to teach me? And by the end of the academy, they're advocates for that particular law enforcement agency. So I think those are very important, and I think the community involvement, we've seen that firsthand, just being here for the last almost two days, that this agency is very committed to serving the people of the city of Norwalk, and we have seen that repeatedly. So again, I want to thank you for coming out this evening and sharing your thoughts with us. If you have any other comments or thoughts, we're more than happy to listen, and if not, have a good evening.